Good evening. I'm gonna bang this thing. Still getting used to that. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners. It is January 22nd, about 6 o'clock. If you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sovereign republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Will. My voice can keep up, but I'm just trying to keep this thing close to myself. I can hear right now. I'll strain myself. Please join me for a moment of silence. Good thoughts from my voice. For work, we have an agenda in front of you, so at this point, we're looking for approval of your agenda. Make a motion that we approve your agenda as presented. Motion on the floor is there a second?
Second motion.
Second from BJ. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. The first item on our agenda, of course, is the public comment. We were talking about that earlier, that we're proud to always have two times during every meeting for the public to speak, beginning and the end of each meeting. And then last meeting, we forgot to do the second. So I wanted to apologize about that publicly. This is a declaratory on our part, but hey, we're getting there. The other thing I didn't do last time is a short thing that we like to read before public comment, is just to remind you, tell us your name and where you live, and that you get basically three minutes to speak, five minutes if you're representing a group, that sort of thing. We don't have anybody signed up today. Is anybody in the audience feeling interested in speaking at the first public comment? Off the choir group. Hearing none, I will close the public comment. You do have another chance at the end of the meeting as well. I hope we can have some lively discussion later in the meeting as well, I hope. Since there was no public comment, we don't need to respond to public comment. We have introductions, presentations, anything in that column, alright? No old business coming back up, so we'll jump right into new business. As you all probably realize, we are going to have a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners to have a work session on large single-family dwellings and event homes. And before that, we're gonna move to this table in the center, so we can be closer to you, and we do want to involve the public in this discussion, so we will do that once we get there.
Thank you, Will Junior.
Thank you, guys, for coming for this joint work session. You know, we've put a few things in the packet for background. I know we've talked about these issues a number of times over the years, back when I was on the Planning Board, going back many, many years. Obviously, the background is, we have some larger homes being built on the oceanfront this year. They've already been committed, but they've got the discussion going publicly, a number of things, we've written a paper, a lot of public reaching out to me and members of the Board, about what it is we really want to see as a vision for our oceanfront, and how do we achieve those goals. It seems that some of it has to do with the sort of friction between uses, and sometimes it's just the friction between just bulk size, big building next to a small building. We have obviously a great field of variety on the oceanfront. We have condo units, we have small cottages, we have some of these new event homes coming in. But I want this discussion to be wide open. We've got a whiteboard up here, so we can take out some of the ideas. We want to cover some of the ideas that have been brought up in the past, we want to try out some other new ideas, and we want the public to feel like they can get involved too. So when we get down the road there, we'll be asking you all to see if you have any other ideas about it. I don't want to talk too much, but let me just run down at the very beginning that we've had a couple of items that came before the board in the past. You all saw them. There was one having to do with commercial landscaping standards for certain sizes of larger dwellings on the oceanfront. We'd like to revisit those ideas and see if there's something that could be some sort of unanimous agreement about that that might be able to move forward. The idea from this meeting is we're gonna send best ideas back to the Planning Board and Planning Staff to develop, but hopefully be things that we could take action on a number of fronts that might help us move in the direction that we're hoping to move into. So we've got the landscaping idea, there was another idea that involved additional requirements for drive aisle, or basically more parking space, sort of safety measures for fire, to get closer to a big dwelling, a big building. Hang in there. And then, we want to open up to other new ideas. We, about a year, or two a year, a couple of years ago, we opened up the opportunity for builders to do cottage courts, which hadn't been allowed for many years. That's back on the books, so you can do a cottage court as an alternate to having a large structure. We hope that somebody takes us up on those opportunities. They haven't so far. But that requirement involves 100-foot frontage, which limits the number of sites that that could take place. So one of the ideas I like to bring up was the possibility of not being allowed a 70-foot, 75-foot width lot on the oceanfront. And then, to take it even another step further, are there things we can do with multiple structures on a 50-foot lot? Because if, you know, part of the challenge that we have here is that our lots on the oceanfront are extremely deep in some places, good section of the town, 400 and 500 feet deep, and because of the side yard setbacks and that sort of thing, you end up with these odd-looking, long buildings that I think are not terribly aesthetically pleasing or popular with the general public in general. So, if right now, in the oceanfront, you're not allowed to have more than two structures, if there was a way that we could modify that to allow more structures on those extra-large lots, maybe we could encourage more of the kind of development that we're hoping to Now that I've gone on way too long, trying to figure the best format to move forward. One last thing I wanted to say in opening remarks here, is that I hope that we can address a lot of the ideas that have come up. Some of them have a lot of promise, some of them have very little promise. So we want to put to bed some of the ideas that keep swirling back around, and there's a reason that they don't seem to have the legs for it. I want the public to be fully educated on why we have considered them and why we have sought their design. One of those is square footage limitations. It's been widely reported that we have, there are square footage limitations in neighboring jurisdictions, and next to southern shores, 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. These codes were put in place many, many years ago, when lots were not being developed the way they are now. And those towns also, I'm so sorry about my voice, don't have the kind of deep lots that we have. The problem with putting a cap on it at this point, is that if you curtail what the property owner can do with their lot to a point where it really starts taking a lot of value away, those things put the town in a legal position we would not like to be in, i.e., they would sue, and they would win, and we would lose, and it would cost taxpayer money. It's not something we would responsibly be doing if we went down that path. So that's why we're exploring these other ideas, other than lot coverage. And there's also been another idea that's been brought up about having this sort of a third designation, this is sort of a high level. It's not a house, it's not a business, what's this third thing? There are folks that are pursuing that at the state level, but it seems to not really have legs. Again, I'm running out of the mouth, I really want to get back to the things that we can work together on, that will get us where we want to go. Should I pick people to talk, or do we want to jump in?
Well, I was just gonna ask you, how are you gonna allow the public input during your session? Is that something we allow?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, can I start with one of these?
Sure, why don't we let you start? That sounds fun.
I don't know where to start.
Yeah.
Well, just from the No Mini Hotels, KTH, from our point of view, we're totally in agreement with what Mayor Brown said.
Brown, yes.
He'll be quicker than that, so.
We'll fix.
So, here, this is the way, we're just gonna state the facts as we see them now, from our side.
And who are you?
I'm so sorry, it's same, Beth O'Leary. Uh huh. And my, of course, I'm supposed to say my address, 1219 South Virginia Dare Trail.
Could you come to the podium, I'm sorry, to help us record it, so we can have it coming.
Oh, okay. I thought we were talking from our seats.
I'm trying to keep it casual, but we're trying to keep it recorded as well.
Okay, what could be formal, casual, I can be in between. Okay, Beth O'Leary. 1219 South Virginia Dare Trail. Is there something else I'm supposed to say? Is that the only thing? Okay, so, as I said, well, I'm part of the group that represents the KTH, who gets many hotels. And so, we've been continuing our efforts as these structures have been going up, and as the, we've had a change of the guards, I guess, here at the town. So we just wanted to start this off, the work session discussion, from our point, just to state the facts as we see them now, since that we've also been getting the same information and understanding the same information, that we understand that a third designation is not an option from the state level, and that's something that will not be looked at, or implemented, or taken care of, and that's something that, from the information that I've been provided, is something that will have to be handled through local zoning ordinance, if there's anything we want to try to do with that. But there will be no official way to handle that through the state, so that's fixed, Nate. No maximum square footage for single-family homes, as we had proposed before, 6,000 square feet, as similar towns have done. We realize now, that's a no-go, that's not gonna happen, so we're open to compromise on many, many levels. We have a lot of ideas, just I'm sure you have ideas, hoping some of our ideas may be different, may be useful, or make you think in a different way. The, let me just get my little notes here. Looking at the situation, putting all of it in a better understanding for anybody that's not aware of where we, how we've gotten to this, this is how we've gotten to our new decisions, is that the reason that we're here mostly consists of just a few reasons. The Senate Bill 25, to change the aesthetics requirements and allow us to no longer control the number of bedrooms, that municipalities can't be more restrictive than the state requires. The waste treatment facility, the private facility that has opened up, has certainly opened up many opportunities for these larger homes to take up an entire lot, as they don't have to have subject tanks then. And that we're also on the widest part of the beach, and since we're on the widest part of the beach, opens us up for larger homes. And it's a great tax base for our town, and the wedding industry has continued to rise, and as it continues to rise, and we become a wedding destination, that's where the growth has been, that's where the redevelopment's been, is just a combination of the Senate Bill, having the facilities for treatment, waste treatment now, and just the size of our beach, and then the way the wedding destination is going. So that's changed the whole scope of redevelopment in Kill double Hills moving forward. My hope is that we can look at this and realize that this is probably not a long-time trend of redevelopment, and maybe is, and that's why we're kind of concerned about containing it, or maybe limiting the focus moving forward of so many of just these type of homes, because that is their use, that's all they're used for, that's the entire purpose. And we have so many, we've got three going up right now, and they're just getting larger. And so, that being said, should I continue? I feel like I'm holding the floor. Should I just continue, or should I just go ahead?
Well, I don't know where you're gonna go exactly, but...
I was just gonna give you some of the, some of the ideas we had, options going forward, that I can...
Why don't we, yeah, go through the short version, and then we'll take each one by one and try to give us good thoughtful...
Sure, okay, so, so these are, this is just some of the ideas that I had. Since we're gonna look at regulating for the local zoning ordinance and environmental regulations, things we were thinking about was just to look at a tiered system on the ocean-impact residential area. That could be, we could look at the floor-area ratio, which I assume, as I, I believe that is not in place for residential, is that correct?
Correct.
It's not in place for residential. Right, and whether or not, that would be something that we're considering, might be something we could consider, to require, this is if we have a tiered system, so if we have a tiered system...
Tiered by size, you mean?
Uh huh. We would, we would require permeable pavers, which I know that is in place now, you can, if you use permeable pavers, you can have more lot coverage. But that should kind of be required, I think, the larger the home's get, that should be a requirement. Sprinklers, I know that's iffy, so I just put that in, there's a hope. Limiting the number of floors, you know, three floors is a lot, that's a lot of density. We limited it to two floors, the larger the home, two floors were, you know, I think the safety as far as egress and egress and safety, just access, no density, all that would be helped. Increase setbacks, the larger the homes, require more buffer and natural vegetation landscape. As the homes increase in size, it'll soften the look of the homes, it'll help with the noise, stormwater runoff, trash blowing, and add more privacy to the neighboring cottages that, as we have right now, ours, we're literally, how many feet? 12, 12 feet, alright, from a three-bedroom, a three-story, and Martha's kitchen window, she can look directly, they can look directly at her. So there's just no privacy at all. So we think that would, that would definitely be helpful, so, I'll let it go.
That's a good summary.
Some things to think about.
Those are most of the things we have.
And as I said, the tiered system is, my main concern here is that we've always had a problem about deciding how we're gonna designate these homes. How do we keep these homes from being like just a large home that someone wealthy comes and builds, and saying, you know, they want a 10,000-square-foot home with 20 bedrooms? How do we designate the two? And the thing I've been seeing over and over and over, and I hope, I hope this is helpful, is that it's the way it's marketed, the way the builder markets it to the investor, the way the owner markets it through the real estate. These are marketed as wedding destinations. They're marketed as have your wedding on the beachfront, and then have your reception in your own home. This is the way they're marketed. Sleep 60, but host up to 100. This is marketed as an event. When I was speaking, I did speak with a council member this week, at the North Carolina Building Code Council, and I was explaining to him the issues that we were having, and he gave me a contact name for the Department of Insurance to talk to, because since these are being marketed as having the receptions in the homes, he said, you know, they're very clever, the builders have lots of attorneys, they're very clever about marketing or changing the wording on the blueprints that say it's just a large living room, instead of saying it's a chapel, or whatever, but that's the way they do it, they know how to do it. But if they're marketing it to be used as a wedding destination, and they're saying you can, it hosts up to 100, and you've got, you can have the reception in your own home, that's, that's a public event, that's a huge event, not public, but just, it's not a private residence anymore, it's, it's an event home. It has a, it has a use, it has a special purpose, and I think we even talked about our committee that had written up some things for us, that you can list them as a, have a special use permit, conditional use, building forward, but there's just all different ways we can address that. But for me, that's the number-one way, I think, that we can figure out how to designate these places, and bring some peace to everybody, because, you know, we're all looking for the peaceful enjoyment of our own homes, that's all we want, and to live in coexistence with, you know, progression and development and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you staying on top of this topic and keeping it front burner, because, like you said, it's been brought up many times over many years. I think we're now in a, in a moment where there's a bunch of people up here ready to take some action, which we've got to figure out what that is. Just to circle back on what you said, we are, we are looking at, because we can't prohibit certain things that we don't want, we are looking at ways to incentivize property owners to build in ways that we would find more compatible, and so that's what the cottage court idea is really about. So we're gonna focus this meeting on zoning ordinance-type types of solutions, and we'll have those other ideas at some other time, talk about permits and that sort of thing. So, let's, let's organize it this way. Let's start with the, with the familiar topics, the two proposed zoning amendments that came up in November. Those were ideas that the previous board sent to Planning and Planning Board and Staff in August, and then somehow fell apart before the vote. Let's hear from the Planning Board about what you thought of how those were presented, do they need some tweaking? And then, let's hear from, from the rest of the Commissioners here, how we feel about them, and maybe we could have Staff kind of put finer points on them to remind us what was in them. Let's start with the easiest one first, which was the landscaping idea. Meredith, if I'm not remembering this improperly, it was basically that the commercial, the level of landscaping usually required for commercial lots would be required for, and then with some sort of definition of a certain size, is that right?
Correct. 6,000, 6,000 square feet of lot coverage, not building, but lot coverage would trigger providing a vegetative buffer of five feet, property line is five feet in, very identical to our commercial buffer requirements for incompatible uses.
Right, so this would really not trigger, as written, for very many properties unless they're of the very largest. So, you know, in hindsight, I think it was sort of surprising that it didn't have the support of that time. We have a few new board members, my understanding is a bunch of you guys weigh in, how do you feel about that landscaping idea?
I mean, I think, as, as you said, if it, you know, if we're providing some kind of privacy, and this is, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's probably a pretty minimal investment for the builder, then, and it's something that we can compromise on, even if it's something little.
Take every little bit of stuff we can take, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thoughts?
Well, yeah, I, I think the property line, the vegetative buffer, this is what's between, this is the houses below 6,000 and above 6,000. If they're too large houses next to each other, it did not, do they have to have the buffer as well or not?
Yes.
Right, yeah, either of them.
Because I, my feeling at the time, and it kind of holds true now, is I kind of like the idea a lot of having these larger and smaller homes, if you only have, you have 10-foot setbacks, only 20 feet between these houses, I hate to have something that could potentially, if someone needed to get an ambulance or something, well, the ambulance may be big, but it could be an obstacle in the way of kind of getting to the front and back of the house. I really like the idea of keeping it between large and smaller home. Could it be adjusted to just be a requirement from like the houses above and below 6,000 square feet, so uniform for the whole zone?
I don't know, if you think about it, even if the house is small, and it's on a 50-foot lot, that same gap between every lot is gonna be the same, regardless of the size of the home on either side of the line. And we're really talking about, you know, a tree, a bush, a bush, that sort of thing.
Not a continuous fence with like...
Yeah, not like a wall of trees or anything.
Because I think of a commercial grade, that's a change of buffers, I live on First Street, I think of Publix and...
Yeah, this is Publix, you go overboard, right?
We don't want to go, we're not approaching something anywhere near that scale, but at the same time, you know...
You guys have it in front of you there?
I just want to say that, right now, you can, on your own option, put a fence on your property line, not required. So, they can do that today, and most of the larger structures do have a fence on their property line on the east side of their house, because they have to have a fence by building code for their pool.
Yep.
So, a lot of the fences are already there. This would be a vegetative buffer that would be required. They can do it now, we have some builders in the large homes that are doing it right now anyway, because they think it makes it look nice.
Has value.
But, they, they can put these items in today without it being required. So I didn't want you to think that we're making them put up a fence, it's gonna cause a problem, they can do it right now, it's just not required. Some are, and most of the houses have fences for their, their pool area, and/or to keep people from crossing over to go to the beach and cut them through. We have a lot of those too. So, just wanted to note that it is permitted, right now it's just not required.
Yeah, and if I may, to add something to that, talking about, say, your first responders, right now, if you have, let's say, six large oceanfront homes in the wild, they likely have fence to fence to fence, and there is no clear regress from the front of that property to the east. So now, you have fences prohibiting access along and around the entire property, where if you had a landscape buffer, there may be a tree or a bush there, but it's not more navigable. Say that again?
It'd be easier to navigate.
You could actually get around the structure without having to go through a pool gate or over a six-foot fence, because there's not a requirement to be a gate there for first responders, because once again, we're talking single-family dwell. So talking for first responders, I think it would make the site more accessible to having, you know, a five-foot buffer area where, you know, there's nothing except for some landscaping, to improve also the character.
Yeah, circling back, the idea of vegetative buffer is mostly aesthetic, and it has a number of other benefits, including trees and plants are always taking up water, we're always talking about stormwater issues, the amount of water that's shed off the roof of these houses adds that charge, the water that's coming down, heavy rain events, so you have multiple benefits there. But mostly, I think that when folks drive down the beach road, the folks that have done some landscaping, it does improve the general aesthetic of the entire town, and it's a small thing that we could, we could do, but only with these really, really large houses. Overall, I think this is like the first of many, many ideas. I hope that when we get down the road, what we're really, the meat of this conversation is about incentivizing smaller houses instead of larger ones, but in the case that someone didn't want to do that, and they still have this option, at least then we're gonna have at least something that offsets or mitigates that, those conflicts. I didn't hear from the other two gentlemen down at the end here. You want to pipe in?
One question I had, now the vegetative buffer can be included in the setback, or is it an addition to the setback?
No, no, it's in the setback that already exists there. Excuse me.
My, my position would be one that, I guess, I can see the advantages to having it, I don't think it makes an incredible difference, I think I told you that I thought it's minor, but as far as, you know, the impact that it could make, but I don't see, you know, any real detriment either, so, so while, while I think there are some small benefits, of course aesthetics is certainly great, I don't see it making some, some great difference either. So, either noise, or possibly helping obviously run off any vegetation wood, but, you know, it's, it's interesting, but the other thing I think that should be kept in mind, or one thing that I've thought of, is some sort of fire safety lane, that this could potentially avoid having such, such a fire safety lane, or, you know, for first responders to get in quickly, maybe some sort of breakaway lane, or something like that, on these large houses, and then by, by planning, we're gonna have, avoid that, that possibility altogether. But that, that might not even be, be a possibility, but some, some access that could easily be broken away, even if it was a small fence or something, that reserved an area for fire to get in there. even if it was a small uh fence or something that reserved an area for fire to get in there if if necessary. I mean, if you build, if you if you if you plant, it's going to be, there'll be no shot at that, but.
Well, I think there really isn't a shot at that at this point, you know. Most of the side yards of these houses is sugar sand anywhere and no apparatus is going to go in there at all. I think that I don't want to speak for the fire folks, but I'm I'm fairly confident that they're going to stay on the paved
Right.
Stuff. So I think that we really don't have to worry about that being a downside. Let me do this. Uh let me jump around. Instead of going from the smallest little bites, let's jump to the other end of the spectrum, which is an idea that hasn't really come up first and it would bring in the planning board folks so you don't feel like you're sitting there above on a log here. So I talked briefly in the beginning about uh we we have brought in um the ability to have cottage courts on a hundred foot frontage. Seventy-five foot, I think, is not a big uh a big leap from that and we might be able to ask staff to develop that for us. But when it comes to fifty foot wide lot, there will have to be some concessions in order to encourage multiple dwelling units on a narrow yet deep lot. So what I'm imagining is is a kind of a code that would uh only kick in if you had a very deep lot, over three hundred feet or two hundred fifty or four hundred, whatever the number is. One of those lots that could at fifty feet wide support twenty bedrooms. Now, how do we create a code that would give a builder or developer another option? Right now, they could only build two structures on it. Economically, they're always going to build one because it's more efficient, less costly, unless there's some sort of benefit to do that. So if if you were to take that fifty foot lot and change some of the rules, including the side yard setback, I think a neighboring property would prefer to have a driveway that was a little closer to the property line in order to have a row of small cottages in that narrow fifty foot lot. Now, these would have to be pretty small cottages because you've already got, is it ten foot for the drive aisle? And then uh you've got the side yard setback on the other side is at least ten, right? So now you've, you know, you see her down to uh twenty twenty feet unless you push that driveway over a little bit further, you might be able to get to twenty-five. So we get a twenty-five foot structure there with maybe forty feet long, do a couple stories there, parking underneath. Now you've got a little unit that's four bedrooms, probably will turn four or five thousand dollars a week in in the peak season. And in a five hundred foot deep lot with fire setback between them, you might be able to get eight or ten. And what I'm trying to conceive of is that the public would like to see eight or ten little cottages in a row more than they'd like to see a twenty thousand square foot, twenty bedroom home. And if that uh each of those units was five thousand dollars apiece and made fifty grand a week, that would far exceed what a twenty bedroom home would fetch in the thirty-five thousand dollar a week range. Now, I'm just throwing numbers completely out. Real builders out there will totally school me on how it is. But I think that this is uh the this is the far end of the spectrum from landscaping. This is like a radical change that if we could find a way to incentivize, and when I say incentivize, I mean find a way for property owners to have a better option than a gigantic home. Because why do people build a gigantic home? Because it's the highest and best use. It's going to turn around and make more money for you, right? So if we could find a way that uh these other uh changes, moving uh the setback, changing allowing a little less setback so you get that drive aisle on one side, what other things would get it in the realm of possible? So someone who has a million dollar, multimillion dollar, is probably going to choose this option over it in in sort of maybe a condo style or a number of ways you can structure it legally. Let me throw that to the planning board and just hash out whether you think that has any legs at all. Thoughts?
I have a thought right off the bat. Uh you said it was, I I believe what you're talking about is a row of houses and then say the south border with the ten foot driveway could be the ten foot setback.
Right.
Now you have a ten foot, now you still, you have thirty foot instead of the twenty foot you just mentioned.
Well, then you gotta have a setback on the other side.
From the driveway?
On the on the north side.
Yeah, so it'd be ten and the driveway would be ten and fifty foot lot that would still leave you thirty.
Oh, right. Well, if you put the driveway all the way to the line, I was imagining.
Well, that's that's why I'm going, because if you could take that and turn it into four or five lots, you say it's a million dollars, just do easy math, each each lot then would become worth two hundred and fifty if you could build a house on it, have an easement for a shared driveway. Well, now you've just sliced the pie a different way because as I believe right now, you can't subdivide those lots and sell it to five different people.
You cannot, correct.
So maybe that's something we may want to look.
So yeah, there's that's two structural ideas for staff to consider. Do you guys want to weigh in now or you want to just work on this between now and the next two? Tell us if we're going off on We don't want to waste time going down a path that doesn't make sense.
So change in the lot width to allow cottage courts is something that's very simple to do regulatorily. Whether a builder can build it would be a design, a design issue. The subdivision thing is slightly more complicated um because we have very strict subdivision rules and we would have to apply them not just to these few areas, but you would end up allowing much smaller and much higher densities throughout town versus just on the oceanfront. Eddie's here, but we did, the first amendment that was done was for a cottage court and it was specific to be under single ownership. Eddie came back and did cluster homes and that allowed the homes to be condominiumized um by ownership, which is kind of, I think, what Mike's saying without formal subdivision requirements, which means that they could be developed and and sold independently and have separate owners on the same lot with common areas. And that is something that we already currently have in our books. Um Eddie did both amendments. So one is under single ownership, which is what you would say is a traditional cottage court. And the other one is a cluster home which allowed for independent ownership for them to be separated um separate footprints for for the footprint of the house. So I think that we may have accomplished what Mike said through that amendment versus changing our subdivision ordinance. I think that what he said can be accomplished right now. It then it comes back down to your widths.
Right.
And and they for I If anybody wants to look at how our cottages are set up, certainly they're welcome to look at it.
What's the width of your lot, isn't it?
Ours is a hundred, but we have two rows of cottages, four cottages, and then we have a shared driveway and a setback of ten foot. And you certainly can get reminded, Ben, I would like to see because that's
I think everybody's familiar with your probably, people who know where they live.
We're in England and calling.
Section where we're talking about. I'm sorry, I missed a little bit what you guys were talking. I'm trying to listen to both things. So yeah, this is very encouraging that you're putting those two together.
Well, these are the two things that you've talked about.
Do you think that, yeah, do you think that the fifty foot would require additional changes in order to make it workable? Maybe that's something Eddie would weigh in on.
Well, yes. Um one one specific thing would be to allow the driveway to be closer than five feet from the property line. It would have to be reduced to a a a smaller number. I would not recommend zero.
One or two.
I would say probably two or three to to make it feasible and to be able to get if you're parking underneath, to get it to a radius. That that's designers can do amazing things. Um they're amazing. They have amazing minds. But I think your your driveway would have to be changed. I wouldn't recommend changing your setbacks because that again would be something that you would have to probably
You couldn't make a setback contingent on only deep lots or something.
It may be if you start changing setbacks for specific uses, you have to change it for other uses. And I'm not sure that we want to encourage people to build closer to each other.
No, 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 definitely not widely, but I I you can't limit a setback to a certain uh definition of an extra large lot only.
No, you can't. But I I believe because of these oceanfront properties are all hooking up to the Kill Devil Northway water treatment plan, that's the only thing giving them the ability to go that big. So
You can't turn that back.
Yeah. So my thought is if you hook all those houses up and then we could go back to more of a traditional style.
Right.
I mean, I know I know people will pay a premium for an old old house on that side of the road.
Sure.
You know, not everybody wants twenty bedrooms. A lot of people want three or four.
Right, yeah, we we know that a lot of this is market forces. I was telling a a number of the board members when we talked earlier in the week independently, one you know, one-on-one, that I before coming into the office of mayor, I've been listening to a lot of podcasts, reading a lot of books about mayors and how they do things and interestingly, most of them are trying desperately to get investment to their town and having a hard time doing it. And they have success stories, they get to write a book about it. We have an entirely different set of challenges. We have a giant fire hose of mine coming at us at all times. And we're just trying to point it in the right direction. So I think that analogy uh helps me uh guide it in that way. I'm with you that um we need to work with folks that design for a living and could do these kind of numbers in their heads.
And plus the second part of that.
The second part is, I'm sorry.
I know we can't do spot zoning and I know this would open it up. If what's good for the goose is good for the gander. But you get a ten thousand square foot lot on the west side, you allow a main driveway to come down. Now, you could build a cluster of four homes well within the recombined lot and have the houses there and they'll all be set up. It the only the only difference being that if you can work it so they can have that shared driveway that cuts a lot of the lot coverage, it makes it more doable, which makes it more valuable.
Eric, do you have something to say?
I'm sorry.
The the subdivision thing with the that our code works and the general statute, that that won't work to subdivide a lot into multiple lots without access. You can condominiumize them like we talked about and and have ownership of your footprint and and shared use, but and the the other thing is specifically with the setbacks, you're not going to be able to modify setbacks by use.
By use?
So
Or even by definition of the lot? No. Okay.
No, not by not by use. You're going to have
Be across design.
Across the whole design, okay.
But you can change for a cottage board, the where the driveway can go. That's that's a dimensional thing. That is not a setback. That's not a that's not a bulk issue. That's a
Right, setback is about the building, not about those
Correct.
Features. Right. Okay. That has some legs. Couldn't do it on wood, to a specific wood.
I think you're looking at spot zoning potentially. You're in the same district, you're picking one lot over and over. Look at its characteristics and you're restricting its use, which is essentially a definition.
But but you can, you can make a driveway closer to a property line.
All right.
For, because right now the the cottage courts and cluster homes are both conditional uses in the O I R, which means they've got to go through the conditional use process, which is a full site plan to the planning board, board of commissioners, public hearing. And the board can look at it as as the the lot.
Probably with permitted uses.
Did we make them permitted uses? Those for sure are conditional. That's made them conditional. Maybe maybe if we do this, we need to highly consider making them conditional.
We haven't built them yet, so.
Right, and that and that that's the thing.
Isn't it very bad?
I'm a step in the right direction. It's a step in the right direction, but yeah. Also, when you back up thirty thousand feet, we're we're talking about how these neighbors are going to deal with each other over the next couple of years. But really, all of these ideas are about where is the town going to be ten and twenty years from now? Because these things don't happen quickly. You make a change like this, it'll take some time for builders and folks to adapt, figure out what the best way to use the new rules is, and then for the the first person to be the brave one to do it. And to make sure that it works because it's uncharted territory, it's not for everybody.
It is, but if we were to start deciling stuff like that, we might want to highly consider making it into conditional, just as an FYI.
Okay, you would know best. The two of them are murky to me, so I'll let you uh be the expert on that one. We're just looking for tools to get the job done.
I'm not sure I know how to spell incentivize.
Just put a big dollar sign.
I think we're pretty open before you ask you to stand here. It's a good idea.
Yeah, and certainly on seventy-five foot lots. You know, we have a couple of those unicorn lots in town. And the math works. I mean, you've you've got a lot more room on seventy-five feet. Fifty feet, I don't know if it's really your, you know, if it would work out or not. But seventy-five feet, I would think, like Meredith said, designers can work wonders. Um but that's a lot more room, you know. We've got a couple of large, single family homes going on right now, seventy-five foot wide lots, so. Two of them. Maybe they're not unicorns, maybe they're normal.
Yeah, they're waiting for this moment, right?
Right.
We're trying to give them an opportunity to do that. So yeah, since this, we have the press here as well, we we definitely want the the public to know, the building community to know that we're looking for ideas from them too, that if they could think of ways that will be economically viable on these fifty foot lots that are other than gigantic, maybe you know, wedding event homes, whatever you want to call them. We want to hear. We want to know what would work and what would be uh a use that would be enticing to our owner and builder. So those are the, those are the big ones. If we wanted to go back to um, so I think they've got a little direction there. The the drive aisle issue. Um I talked to some folks about um about that and say it's the same in the area that B J was saying. Is it make a little bit of a difference? Is it worth doing? What's the benefit? What what are the pros and cons? Because really, we've got the incompatible uses issue, we've got the bulk issue. And then when you notice that you don't like this big house, you also notice, well, it doesn't really look that safe. What can we do about safety? And safety is something that we, because independently is a problem that we like to address. If if another big house was built, would having more room in the concrete leading up to it make that house safer? Part of that original proposal included an increase in the setback from at five feet to seven feet.
Correct.
I if I understood the conversations correctly, I think that was part of the reason some of the no votes came around last time. So um since that was a point of friction, let's just start with leaving those out. Does the idea by itself have legs with this five group of five? And would the planning board like to chime in about the benefits of that? And when you researched it back in the fall, how did you feel about it? Anybody want to jump in?
I think the the one that we originally talked about, if you don't mind, vegetative uh barrier.
Right.
We were unanimous vote. We, that was a not, that was a not issue. I mean, we thought that was the easy one. That was good to try to do something to help out the neighbors when they're going to have this big house next to them. And we didn't see where it was impacting anything because it was going to be right in the setback. It was it was an easy sell, basically. Unfortunately, I don't know how we kind of got off the rails, but it did become an easy sell. As far as the the safety aspect, uh you know, the drive aisle, given that extra space, uh you know, from a fire apartment standpoint, you know, when you have a house that's that that's that tall, you want to get the fire apparatus as close as you can. That's another easy one, we thought, uh that was not going to be a big impact.
So remind the new members exactly how that was going to work.
Which part?
The the how it was going to change the drive out.
Well, the drive out, well, probably get Cameron because he's a
Cameron, I could actually pull it up for you as well. Thank you.
I should have had you here myself.
So previously, um parking requirements for single family dwellings was broken up into dwellings with four bedrooms or less or dwellings with five bedrooms or more. I don't think at the time, there was ever a belief that we would have twenty-four bedroom homes. So that's when we get decided that from directions from the board, that we're going to have new parking requirements for dwellings with uh five to ten bedrooms, that's the old one, and I'm sorry, dwellings with eleven bedrooms or more. The big changes in this was an increase in side yard setback, like Mayor said, from five feet to seven feet. It also required for a minimum of one access aisle be designed to um be unobstructed within forty feet of the dwelling, which is two parking spaces still in the drive aisle. And then also, no single row of stacked parking shall exceed six required spaces. So you can't start, I mean, stacked parking all the way from the front of the building all the way to where your front yard parking setback is. It will be limited to six. Increase side yard setback and your access aisle would reach at least forty feet of the front plane of the dwell. The fire department can probably speak on as well. Some of these buildings are two hundred feet long. They have a hundred and fifty feet of hose length. So even getting within forty feet of the building, we're getting closer, but we really aren't quite there. So that's take that into consideration as well for an access aisle. That's the gist of it.
The gist of it is it may not be uh unless you, was the idea to like paint stripes on like you can't park in this in this zone? Or was that not part of it?
We can, but that was not part of the amendment.
But even if you just had more concrete there in general, no matter where anybody parked, there'd be more room for apparatus. parked, there'd be more room for apparatus. Is that the general gist of it?
Yeah, and circulation, absolutely. And when you're talking 24 vehicles or 20 vehicles.
That's a lot of concrete.
Yeah, you're looking at a NASCAR pileup for, you know, an accident. So it actually provides circulation. People get in and out of the property safely. Not just fire apparatus, but EMS.
Because they're not parked in by six cars.
And the more pavement you have down in prior law enforcement, they're going to park them in there. And then when you need to get an ambulance, you need to get a fire truck in there, it is an amendment.
Yeah, you're far away.
Nobody's going to enforce a fire lane in a private driveway.
But it promotes, it promotes the safety of the site.
Because you end up having more places to park in general, more places to put some vehicle of any kind.
If I understood it right, at that time, we can't, because it's a residential, single-family home, we can't enforce them to even put pavement marking.
Right, that's what I thought.
Can't even say fire lane or no parking. We can't make them do that.
All it is is more square feet.
I mean, you can encourage it, but we can't, we can't adopt that as an ordinance.
Would it be a written rule? But you can't make them paint it, but it still would be.
Well, that's what we're talking about, giving the space for it, but we can't.
Well, all you're talking about is, well, yeah, but then you just shifted the liability from the town, because they can't get to there, to the people that don't allow the town. This is a legal liability issue. I don't think we have any liability there at this point.
We're not liable for owners not taking the precautions that have been required of them. We would require an access aisle. If they choose to ignore us, then they're liable for ignoring us.
That's what I meant.
It's not, we have absolutely no liability in how someone parks on their property. If they park, if they showed on their site plan that they're going to park like this, and they decide to park like this, we can't go tell them they can't park like that. As long as they're still on their property, that's their business. They can't park on their seventeen greenfield. They do, but they're not supposed to. But we're not liable if someone does not take heed of what was required on their approved site plan, as far as parking is.
Okay, thank you. All right, so circling back to commissioners, I guess that in the grand scheme, we're looking at the big picture. Moving towards multiple, trying to encourage cottage courts and cluster housing is the big, really making the big moves. Hopefully, we can get those going. So we have those on the chart there. I don't want to have staff spend time on these other two unless we really have consensus that we do want to go and take the small bites as well. I know I do. I have a feeling Ivy does. Over here, I feel a little more like I'm not sure. So you guys tell me, you know, are we ready to send them back to do this? Is it worth doing? I get that there's a little, it's soft, it's small, it's a little bites, but.
Can I have a comment?
Sure. I'm free, flexible. Let's do this.
As far as you're talking about for having this extra parking, and you're talking about these larger structures, 6,000 square feet lot coverage and above, I think you said. As I said earlier in my comments, these places are being marketed to host 100 people. Sleep 60, host 100. So you know they're going to be, they're having their rehearsal dinner, their receptions, showers, parties, whatever. You know, there's going to be cars, more than just the 28 cars. So if you're thinking that we don't need to have an area for fire vehicles, I think you absolutely do. I think you have to think in consideration that, you know, just because it's got 28-car parking doesn't mean this is a home that sleeps 60 and is supposed to host 100. They're going to use, they're going to have more cars there. They're going to have more people there. There's going to be more chances for something to happen. And we're the ones that are 12 feet beside them, 70-year-old homes, that are the ones that can suffer. Our homes have been there for generations, passed down to generations, you know.
Let me ask, so you don't think they're just going to park wherever they want to park?
I do think they're going to park wherever they want to park, but I think you have to have something available. And if you had something available that was designated as a safety area for the vehicles, and you had the owners of the property knew that that had to be provided for the safety, they could, they should, we should require that they put into place with these rental agreements, that those areas remain open. You put something there.
But you can't do that, right?
I'm not saying that we will demand it, but I'm saying it certainly would be something that you would ask, that you could say, you know, that would be suggested that they do this.
If it's required on their site plan, we're at least making them aware that we're concerned about a safety issue, whether they heed it or not.
I don't think anybody's looking at the plan in real function.
I'm not asking anybody to make anybody do anything. I'm just saying, the fact that we are, you as the town, as the government body, are taking that step to protect residents and renters and property owners and the like, that that's a big step, and that certainly would be suggested, I would think, wouldn't be a problem.
Right. I think the way to think about it is, your house, if you have four bedrooms in the house, you have to have four pieces of concrete that are 10 by 20, right? So you've got whatever that is, 200 square feet of concrete. If you've got 28 cars there, and they're all stacked up, there's not a lot of wiggle room at all. This is just saying that 20, 10, or 15, or 20 is different from four, and there should be a little extra concrete. Doesn't matter where it is. We'll call it a drive aisle on the design. But in practice, instead of having 28 spaces, it would be 5,600 square feet of concrete. Then we add in 10% more or some, whatever it comes out to, so that there are not 28 10 by 20 spots, but 30 some, you know. So there's just a little more possibility that it would be safer. And it's not a rule that applies equally to four-bedroom houses. It's only over that threshold of 10 or, it's above 10, it's 11 and up. So it wouldn't even apply to any house unless you were one of these really big houses, and it would add, like you said, a modicum of additional safety flexibility, whatever you want to call it. And it would also, because it would require that more concrete, reduce the bulk of the building a little bit as well. Won't change, can't say how many bedrooms, but the overall bulk of it.
These places even have, they've had drug overdoses in these places. The police are, I mean, they have to respond and do narcin. You need to have something, a space, that they can get in there when there's chaos.
Well, the purpose of those, the purpose can't be a backhanded way to reduce the size of a house. That's how I feel about it. An unenforceable ordinance or law is really a waste of time.
I'm just trying to say it's a backhanded way. I had no idea you intended for it to be a backhanded way.
Well, it can't, that's how I feel about it.
Well, but you're.
Because people are going to park. No, no, no. What I'm trying to say is, people are going to park.
So you would take, you would take the state that you should be able to have, your parking space, only your parking place, your house, as much as you can, and you're, there's going to, and you know this is set up, this is, this is not a family vacation. This is an event. This is something they're putting on.
You know, we don't really steer away from the use and stuff. It's just the size.
It is, it's the size, but it should be because of that, many people in one place, drinking.
All right, gotta stay on the lane, but it's really, it's about safety and size. You were going to say.
Well, yeah, I want to, just to speak to that, I mean, drug overdoses, drinking, that can happen at any house. I mean, let's just.
They can, but most houses don't have 20 cars and 100.
To speak to what Mark was saying earlier, so you were referencing more concrete being more. I just, we have really good professional resources, and here we have fire, we have retired fire, we have, so, right, so, so let's utilize this a little bit, I think. So you were referencing the concrete and the amount of cars, and it kind of almost made it sound like maybe that was a bad thing, like more concrete, more cars, harder to get out, harder to get the cars out? Is that what the planning board, is that what you all had?
Was it additional circulation?
Discuss that, or did I, maybe I misunderstood that.
I'm just saying, the more concrete you've got, from what I've seen, more bedrooms, the cars come in, and they're going to stack up and park the best way they can. Sometimes when we have to go in there, it's hard to get in there, because a lot of times, we park out by the bike path toward NC 12, because you're just summertime.
Because you just can't get there.
You cannot. It's impossible to get up in there. So unless, the only way to solve it is to designate, like you said, but again, you're just asking, there's no enforceable way for law and fire, no, to deal with that. So you kind of like, I understand what she's saying, I understand it'd be nice to let them know, and we do that now, but, you know, theory is, they're going to.
Maybe a better way to use the words is that you have to have a space for each of the cars required by the bedrooms. But once you get over 11 bedrooms, or 11 cars required, parking space required, you need more circulation space, and there's some sort of ratio that, so it's not necessarily about a drive aisle or whatever. There's just additional requirement for parking area that's not the parking per se, but for people to move around, right?
It comes down exactly to what I'm saying there. If you have more concrete, if you have enough concrete in front of that mini hotel, 28 cars to deck, they build a two, and you make more concrete. Now Jimmy Jr. is going to bring his car too. Okay, Sally A. is going to bring her car too. So now you got sprue for 36 cars. You're going to have 36 cars if that happens. You're not eliminating any cars, you're not eliminating any mass.
That's why I think if you could add, you could, you would have to at least maybe notify the builders that have these homes, owners that have these homes, that, you know, this is what we're putting into place for your safety, for your resident's safety.
But not the same token. You've got that owner that lives in Ohio, that sees his house one time a year. They depend on a real estate company that's doing 500, 5,000 homes. They don't have time to go out there every week and make sure the parking's right.
I think they need to go by. I think they need to sign something that says that, so you rent, that you're going to make sure that your patrons, the people that you invite to rent, to join this home, are not going to park in an area that's designated for safety. To put the liability back on this. We're providing it for them as the town, so that they can be safe. And then if we let them know that it is up to you to make sure that it's available, because if it's not available, our fire trucks can't get in there, our ambulance can't get in there, your home will not be saved. So if you want your home saved, you'll make your people sign and say, we'll stay after that lot.
One of the goals of this whole meeting is to take, throw all the ideas out there, and then really make sure we look at them on all sides and say, I get the passion behind the idea.
I'm sorry.
But I think that generally, it's pretty easy, I think I can say with great confidence, but the whole group here that's going to have to make a vote, knows that it isn't going to come down to signing anything or rules or, you know, that's it. We're just talking about, at this particular moment, more concrete, is it a benefit or not a benefit? Is it a safety benefit or not a safety benefit? You make a case that.
I think it's a detriment.
It might be a detriment, and that's kind of where you're going to. And I misunderstood it. You had it right. I misunderstood it.
So, but the, and the planning board did, did not recommend.
How did, you did recommend that?
So that's why, I guess that's why I'm confused, because it was recommended, but then the overall feels that it's not. So I guess that's where my confusion is coming in.
You guys thought it was a good idea.
Anything's better than nothing.
Okay. So you did think it was a good idea?
Yes, I did. I mean, it's, the whole idea's on paper, so I'll vote, but yeah.
You can park six cars right behind each other, right?
Correct.
As the ordinance.
As the ordinance allows. So what we're trying to show was, okay, for 20-foot wide, you can only park two cars. So it provides a space closer to the house. Now, this is on paper. It's the site plan. It's how the permit's issued. Is the owner, or the homeowner, or the property manager, or whatever, do they post that in there? Say, hey, you know, this is an emergency area. It's something that tells them, hey, you know what, when Jimmy Lou comes and parks his car, don't park there, because, now, I think that, aside from the house, it's the use. If we get into these large events, like Southern Georgia's starting to permit, you get a permit for an event at a house, which addresses, it's kind of a separate.
It's a separate, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but we're looking at, that's right, and something we need to look at as well.
That's interesting, but I'm with you. Detriment, they're going to park. And shifting liability, a law just to shift liability, or an ordinance to shift liability, I'm not, I don't think that's a great.
There's two parts, there's three parts to the amendment. One was the increased setback, which was the major contention at the board level that I think has been wiped off the table, right? The second one was to provide the emergency access, which was a 40 by 10 area, 40 feet from the house. The other one was to limit stacking to six cars. That's one you haven't talked about. So right now, a 24-bedroom house, if they've got the room, can do 40-foot-wide driveway and 12 cars all the way to the 20-foot setback. No possibility, no inkling in circulation, and everybody's got to back out on NC 12.
20 of them are parked in at all times.
So that, right now, we do not regulate stacking. The third part of this amendment was to say you can't stack more than six, period. Now, will they potentially stack a couple? Maybe. But what we're saying is, you've got to create a driveway that only stacks six each. That creates, so that we have the movement and circulation, so that you can, you don't have a wall of vehicles all the way to the B-trip. That was the third part of the ordinance that hasn't been discussed. So three parts, one's gone, one's being debated, but the stacking hasn't been discussed. So I don't want to lose track of it while y'all have this discussion about the previous amendment. That's all I got.
All right.
Hey, Ben. From a property management standpoint, and actually, let me back up. I think one of the things that we need to continue to pick at is how do we incentivize all of this? Incentivizing the builder, they're going to build what people tell them to build. So I think that there's not a lot of influence that we can do there, but maybe, and I'm thinking out of the box, again, from a property management standpoint, maybe there's some way that we can incentivize the marketing and saying, because we say, this house sleeps X number of people. It's got eight bedrooms, but we got a couple pullout sofas, so, you know, we're going to sleep 22, or whatever it happens to be. Maybe, since the rental companies are already in the process of saying the number of beds, heads and beds, they like to call it, maybe we can also say, and allows parking for X number of vehicles. So, you know, maybe we can incentivize them to change the way that they market to include that, because you're right, if they do an aerial shot of the house, like we can fit 35 cars in there, and everybody's going to drive. But if somebody who's looking at the property description online and says, okay, we have room for 10 cars, as they're planning who's coming, they're also planning who's driving, and maybe we can keep, get them to bring less cars in.
So what do you, when you say incentivize, what would incentivize a company to do that when it's not in their financial interest?
That's a great question.
Why do we have to give them what they want? I don't.
Well, you know, I don't know. Maybe it can be some marketing. Maybe we can give them some advertising on the town website, or maybe we can do some shout-outs on our page. I mean, some things that maybe aren't tied to a lot of money, but what they want to do is they want to get their business out there, and they want to get as many people renting from them as possible. So, you know, maybe there's some creativity we can do in there. We can say, you know, we can, I don't know. I think that there's an avenue there that I feel like we might be able to tap into that is not necessarily tied to cost.
All right, I like it.
And that should be easy to kind of pull the trigger on. But again, as we're talking through all this, I mean, we really need to be incentivizing the right people. And I think as far as incentivizing the builders go, like, again, they're going to build what people pay them to build, the best way that they could build it. And as far as the homeowners go, you know, it was stated before, a lot of the homeowners of these large houses, they don't live here, they've never stepped foot in the house. So we're not incentivizing them to do anything either. So maybe we need to change our focus and maybe look at some of these rental companies and see if there's some way that we can get them involved in the conversation. Just a half a thought.
I like it. We'll put that one, we'll put that one on the next meeting. I think that we're just going to try to focus here on the structural 10, 20-year plan of, sorry, go ahead.
I was also going to add that we're talking zoning code here and possible zoning amendments to our code. And the whole purpose behind these zoning amendments is, zoning is related to promoting the health, safety of the general welfare. And the whole purpose behind these zoning amendments is zoning is related to promoting the health, safety of the general welfare, you know, of our community. And our, and our guests, cause that's really what we have a lot of too. And that, then if that goes into our zoning code, we then review that for compliance when issuing a permit. So we're promoting how that land is being used in a safer manner potentially, if that's what you're deciding to change. Just like if someone drops off a set of building plans that calls every room a rec room, they use them all as bedrooms. We can't regulate, that's their decision as a property owner. Is it smart? Does it maybe have smoke detectors or egress windows? But it happens. But we try and promote that, you know, from a planning and zoning standpoint. You know, at least on paper as we're reviewing it, doing it correctly. So.
Yeah.
Ben, I heard Matt in the back scream stormwater.
Yeah, water quality, all this stuff is gonna, and no, no one wants to rent a house when their water's got bacteria on it.
Yeah, I wanted to address it real quick. Several months ago, before either one of these amendments came up. For houses with six thousand square foot of lot coverage or more, they're required to do a commercial stormwater plan. Um, that was adopted back in, I wanna say June of, of eighteen, uh, nineteen. So when we talk about any type of parking or access or things like that, all this is still under, they, these, these are still things. That they're gonna have to create proper stormwater, uh, plans for containment and infiltration. So just wanted to take that and, and ease your mind just a smidge on that, any extra concrete that might be involved. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to deal with that, cause that's already on the books.
So they have to contain four, I get it right, four and a half inches in two hours. Over the entire site, whatever hits a roof has gotta be contained or infiltrated by strict standards. So it's, it, that's a, that was a big win. So we're proud to have that on the books. You know, there may be a time where we keep moving that towards smaller, smaller houses, but it was, it's good to get it in on the big ones for, for now. Okay, reset for a second. Circling back to, um, parking. So we have some pros and cons of adding more concrete, of adding safety. Of course, I would love to have everything that we do be a unanimous decision. I'm for having a little more concrete, aside from the other part. We'll just stick with the stat part for now. You're in. Is there one more?
Just a second though.
Yeah.
The, the, the more, the, the, the more concrete space alone with the stacked parking.
Yes.
You know, we gotta, we join those two together.
Okay.
You know, getting rid of the one with the setbacks, not having the, the additional setback. Putting those two pieces together really does make perfect sense.
Me the stack.
As opposed to the twelve car, where you're allowed to put, you know, stack twelve cars.
All right, well, let's take the second half first then. How do you feel about the, uh, having a rule about stacked parking being something you require for houses over eleven cars? No rules for ten. There's, should there be a rule for eleven, twelve, twelve fifteen, fifteen seventeen?
Yeah, that's kind of arbitrary number, I would think, but on rooms, I don't know how anybody came up with that. But I would say that.
You gotta draw a line somewhere.
Yeah, you gotta draw a line somewhere, but it's also a bit arbitrary. But, um, stack parking, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, people are going to park somewhere. If you limit, if you're, they're having events at these houses and there's a hundred people, they're gonna be parking in the accesses. And you can be sure if you limit their parking too much, they're gonna find other parking.
But if they, if we talk about, you know, if you're gonna have an event there, that you have to, you know, the, of that permit.
Yeah, well, that's.
Different situation as opposed to, you know, here's forty people showing up for their vacation.
Yeah.
You know, let's limit the way that they can park in there. I mean, let's, let's limit, you know, to take away some of the, the stacked parking. So it does give us some leeway, you know, for emergency equipment to get in there if, if necessary. And even convenience for the people, for God's sakes. Now you stack twelve part, they're having a terrible time. Jock, jockeying all the cars around and, you know, get themselves out.
So how do they?
Or backing out of twelve.
How do you design a parking lot that allows for not only no stacked parking? How do you?
That's not, no, it's not.
Excuse me, six, six pro, six, six, uh, six cars.
Not being an engineer.
No, no, I, I, I just, I'm curious, I'm curious.
That's a design, that's an issue, I think.
I don't, well, it's a design issue, but it's important to understand when you pass an ordinance.
Sure, sure. Eddie, I mean, I don't, can you adjust that?
It's, I mean, the site draws itself.
That's not a difficult thing, I guess, to, to be able to, to design it that way.
A skinny lot, you're gonna have a problem. A wide lot's not a problem. I mean, it's, it's geometry.
On a fifty foot lot, you're only ever gonna get three wide, right? Can you do four wide there?
Four.
You can do four wide.
You're al, you're also limiting it to parking, say, long ways, long ways, long ways. Nothing says you couldn't have a drive aisle and then you pull into a park or you have an angled spot. And you can have as many as you want, because those have circulation to be able to back out.
And there are lots like that.
Those are not stacked.
Yeah.
To the ankle. That's how people park. If you drive down the.
This is how you really permit.
That's how the big houses park. They park at angles, they don't stack themselves.
Right. Once you get to a certain size, it doesn't make sense to stack, cause it just doesn't.
We can't get out.
Well, they do both. They, they, they have angle parking and they stack when they, when they need a lot of cars. They got both.
And, and another thing on the angled parking is you have to look also into the landscaping requirements of having a five foot landscape buffer. When people are complaining to PD or, or zoning that people are parking on their property line during this event. You no longer have that anymore with a five foot landscape buffer. It keeps, keeps people off that property line because there's a buffer of landscaping.
That's a good point.
All those, all those things work together that, and, you know, and create maybe a, a safer development, more aesthetically pleasing.
Well, that's true. You can't park on planning, uh, on landscaping. So that, that's why the landscaping, I guess, is.
That's good.
But.
All right, so I'll put it back to you though, cause you seem to be the most, uh.
Oh, man.
These two guys have.
They've already, they've already voted on this, so. But I'm just making my points, you know, I'd like to hear what you guys think, since you guys voted.
Yeah, you voted on it before, but you can change your mind. We're just curious whether you have to come around.
I, I don't think we have enough information on the part of, like you said.
Yes.
Re enforceability was an issue for me. Um, I think if you're gonna have a fire lane, I think you need to have a marked fire lane. I, I tell you what I'd like to see, I, I, and, and I'm, I'll admit, I'm throwing this way out there. Um, probably further than anybody has so far, but.
It corrects that.
I, I would like to see, um, safety as an issue addressed in some way that, um. You invite people to say, if you do this, you're gonna get this. Uh, if you have a designated marked fire lane.
Well, you get a bonus.
Right, you're gonna get some sort of bonus. If you have exit signage in a building over six thousand square feet, you're gonna get this. Um, you know, and, and like I say, I'm, I'm stretching way out there.
Sure, you never know.
You could even go as far as sprinkle, um, you know, what are you gonna get if you do that? I, I just think that you, if you're gonna, if you're gonna impose a, uh, requirement on somebody, you need to have some way to enforce it. You need to have some way to, to make sure that it's used for that. And, and I haven't seen that yet.
Without incentive, I'm, I'm skeptical of being done. I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't, I've seen a lot of people have a lot of different, um, uses down here for, um, the different, um, houses and so forth. And if it's not in black and white, telling them what they can do, they're gonna do anything they can do. They're gonna be parked on the hill, they're gonna be parked in the dune, they're gonna be parked all over everywhere. That's my hiccup.
Uh, it, just to, to play devil's advocate with that, um, uh, it's washed out by the idea that more cars would come if you made the concrete. Right. Um, so that's what we're trying to suss out. Is, is it worth it? Um, is there, if there's more concrete, does it, does it make it safer or does it make it, um, more workable? And, um, and, you know, intelligent people disagree in all sorts of places here. Meredith, I'm trying to get my attention, but I couldn't tell what you're saying.
Well, we talked about it and, and Casey has been doing some research on the incentivizing safety.
Ah, yes.
And, and, um, one thing that we've come up with is a, as a possibility that, you know, if the board wants us to, to look into it, we can look further. Was to try to incentivize, uh, fire suppression systems in these homes.
Right.
Uh, by means of setback for the public good. Meaning that houses of a certain size would have a greater setback because of fire safety. And the ability of fire to, you know, proximity, proximity to other structures and their size. But if they put in fire suppression.
They get, they get it back.
Would go back to what it is for all the other houses. Um, and.
And the key, the key to this proposal to, to take, so nobody's confused, cause we said today also, you can't pick a lot.
Right, right.
And, you know, make, make the setbacks more restrictive on a particular lot. This would be across the zone. Okay, so that's kind of how that would work now.
It would be across the town.
Well, across the town, exactly.
The whole town.
So, um, that, that's another, again, you're avoiding spot zoning, it's something that, it's, it's doable.
Small house, could put sprinklers in it.
No, it, you would, you would say a house over ten thousand square feet proposes an additional fire hazard because of its proximity. And because it's closer to the setbacks and its size, the, it, it, a fire at a ten thousand square foot house is gonna be much more.
Dangerous.
Right.
Really easier to jump to than a fire at a quarter. But, you know, two thousand square foot house.
If you have a rational basis to, to differentiate that it's legal.
That's rooted, that's rooted in public safety, protection of the public.
It's more fuel.
And, and a lot of our talks, actually, the chief was involved, uh, when we came up with this idea regarding incentivizing fire suppression. And his comment was, you know, that, that would be something very good. That'd be a very positive thing from a safety aspect.
Well, I have a question about that. So if you're talking about, you know, putting that kind of formula in place, and show it at ten thousand square feet. Why can you not look at, um, what the attorney had talked about, um, with a conditional use or a special use, um, for those types of homes? And it could be townwide, doesn't have to be just oceanfront. But I mean, if you're doing a, a special use permit or additional use permit, you would be able to introduce a lot of those same layers. That you're talking about right now for safety and, and buffering and parking and all of those things, um, all under that one umbrella.
I'm not sure I'm following you, I'm sorry. Do you guys follow that?
Like she wouldn't be able to get a permit, you wouldn't be able to get a permit if you didn't comply with some of these safety.
There, there's a, there's a, Robert Corning, who is the attorney that sent the letter in, at the meeting that, uh, that we had. Uh, I don't know if any of you have read it or familiar with it, but I think John has. And one of the things he suggested, and, and because we were looking at his legal opinions, he worked with municipalities in this, in this area. Is that, you know, since you can't control it by, uh, you can't control by square footage, but since we are unable to do that because of our situation. That one way that we can ensure the safety of the renters and the residents and then just the, the enjoyment of the properties and, and balanced coexistence. Is to, to put these, uh, properties that are ten thousand or twelve thousand square feet above, you know, the ones that are that large, in a conditional use. So when, when they are, they present their plans to be permitted, it would be, they would be kicked into a special use permit. Or to a conditional use where there would be a different set of requirements in addition to what is normally permitted, uh, for a single family home. And that's, that is legal.
So.
General outline there.
And in reading the attorney's letter, um, th, these are ideas, um, there is opinion. I'm, I'm not here to say he's not a good attorney. That by no means is what I'm doing. The problem though, as I see it, would be this. We've admitted and everybody here, it seems like agrees with the fact that we cannot put a third designation. We can't just create the idea of event, residential, commercial, and now event. If what you're doing, uh, is requiring a CUP, a, a conditional use permit or a special use permit for only certain homes. Are we not ultimately doing the same thing? Have we not hidden the ball there? And we've ultimately created this third designation, even though we're not calling it an event.
But you can, as, as a municipal, we can designate what's a special use, just like you did cluster homes. And, uh, the cottage courts. That is a, you were saying now that that, that you are considering doing a conditional use or having, you know.
And those you were talking about, they are, they're permitted use now. That's correct. But I will say this.
Well, this event home has a use. It is a specific use.
Those, those items, the cottage, the cottage courts, the, um, cluster homes, call them patio homes. Understand it's not the use that's being regulated, it's the ownership. What you've got there is no different than a condo as compared to a townhouse. You've got a difference in ownership, not in use.
Serious situation here where we've got something in between a commercial and in between a single family home that is operating as a business.
But again, we have to lay that on the side, because that's, that's a no-go.
It's, it's not a no-go.
What you're saying is, can you call it ten thousand square feet as a definition? That's what she's saying. Is that, am I reading this right? Because don't talk about the use anymore. That's not, that's not something we just don't know.
It's, you could say it ten thousand square feet or twelve thousand square feet, but you have to look at the, at the situation that, you know. We understand that there is a certain square footage that has been going on along our coastline, everybody's community. When you get to a certain square footage, there is a home that is causing problems, a size that is causing problems. And it is not just a single family home. It's designated as one because there's a loophole that, that they, that they are, the builders are getting around. The developers are getting around. And we're all being abused. It's all being abused at our expense. And there has to be some way, and I know you've got, you're trying to appease everybody and I am all for it. But, you know, when we, when I've looked and researched and gone to all the extremes that I have, I realize that there are things that are absolutely not possible. Cause we're looking at, these are single family homes and we have to just suck it up and accept it, that these are single family homes. But for God's sakes, they don't act like them, they don't look like them, and they don't treat their neighbors like them. So we have to be able to find a way if we can do conditional, or if we just wanna permit the suckers, if we can just permit them. To make sure they're safe, that they have fire, that they, they have a fire marshal inspection before they're in.
Okay, let me, okay.
I know, I'm on this.
Too many things spinning around. We gotta get, come back to earth.
I'm done.
Real quick.
But I'm not throwing away.
Before, before Eddie speaks, let's, I just wanted to clarify, uh, whether or not her idea about, uh, having some requirement at a certain square footage. That, that doesn't have any legs, or does?
In other words, are, are, now, are we talking about set the cap or?
Not a cap. Okay, different set of rules over a certain square footage. Is that a no-go?
So. And, and what, again, what that comes down to in my opinion, as compared, cause it sounds like what sparked this is the idea that we now incentivize, right? Fire suppression. But we do that based on the square footage of the home. It's the requirement. That's the key there. It's what we're imposing based on the size of the home as compared to what we would allow based on the size of the home.
But we're imposing, it's supposed to, it's a safety.
Correct.
And they won't do it.
Hold on, hold on.
So it, we're imposing a regulation on a square footage, not on how that square footage is being used.
Right.
It's still a single family dwelling, whether there are, is one family that's incredibly rich, that hates each other. And five of them have rented a twenty-four bedroom house just so that they can.
Your parts.
Or if it's a wedding, or if it's Christmas that there's six brothers and sisters that wanna get together. There's all kinds of things that happen in homes. But what we're trying to do here with incentivizing fire suppression is saying a structure. Over a certain size.
Right.
That is designated as a single family dwelling.
As a higher fire.
Has a higher fire risk. Therefore, we will either increase your setbacks to protect the community. Or we will require a fire suppression system regardless of use.
Right, so that's your answer. It can't be done unless that, that logic is applied to it, right?
I understand, I understand that. But I, I still feel like there has to be, that's also giving them the option. And I'm not saying sprinklers and all that stuff. I realize that should be definitely handed that way. There's, because you're not gonna ever get anybody to put sprinklers in these homes. I understand that. But there are other remedies that can be handled under a special, uh, a special use. And I don't understand why, you're saying that you can't say it's a, it's a use, um, because it's a single family home. So you say we can't put a special use.
Just because people do have weddings in it, doesn't require them to put weddings in it. You don't have to have a party in it.
But the whole, the whole thing, my whole argument is, is that they are developed, marketed, and sold.
We're not gonna go in a circle. We gotta stop. Let's go to Eddie and we can come back to that. But I just wanna say, we, we keep hitting that same point over and over again.
Well, because I guess I don't understand what.
Well, right, like I said, because it's marketed and all that, that just is an it's, right? We all agree that that is what is happening.
I can't answer that question.
Okay, go ahead.
Can't tell your neighbors what to do.
I don't want to tell them. I just don't want them to burn my house down.
I, I understand. That's why I.
And I don't want their trash, whatever, to want them kissing in my yard.
Okay, okay, we got it. Let's just not lump everybody into everybody, it's just a house.
The difficulty that, why you're having such an issue is you're trying to regulate what people do on private property. And, it's, uh, you know, you can't tell them they can't look out the window, you can't tell them they can't sing, you can't tell them they can't have a party, you can't tell them they can't get married. And, I, I realize it's a problem, I believe, but I know it is for a fact. But, it's, you know, you, um, the only thing you can hang your hat on is public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what it gets down to. That's all, that's the only thing you can do, because that's the power that you have, it's, if it's, uh, if it's detrimental to the general public and the neighbors, for that matter, you can make changes. And so, um, but, you know, I don't, generally, and I, I'm in a discussion right now with the North Carolina Utilities Commission about these big houses. And the public staff says they're not single family homes. Building permits, single family homes. The, uh, Vacation Rental Act describes them as a vacation rental home. Uh, short-term rentals, it tells you what they are, that's the North Carolina legislation. Uh, General Statute sixty-two A, I think it is. Uh, the Divisional Environmental Quality, which is D- Deaner, North Carolina Department of Natural Resources, describes them as resort rental properties located on barrier islands, north and south, no, south and east of the intercoastal waterway. You have to count habitable rooms, not bedrooms. So they're destroyed. The North Carolina Utilities Commission Public Staff says they're boutique hotels. They're not hotels, hotels have a lot to check in. Uh, the people don't know each other in hotels, generally speaking, you might know some ways, might not. But they didn't all come together and they don't all leave together, and they're not a household. A, a household is more or less defined as a social group of people that live in a house together, they don't have to be family. It can be, the perfect example, the Biltmore State, is a single family home. Biggest house in the United States, I believe. And so, and I mean, it's almost a problem that there's, you know, you're dealing with your neighbors, it's tough.
I think they have, um, handicap parties in there, and it's designated, and it's in a setting.
They should have, well, it's, it's not, it obviously sounds like a commercial, but, you know, but anyway, that's all.
You stood up for a reason.
Dealing with, dealing with private property. But I don't know what best to take. I would like to mention one more thing.
I was gonna say, you stood up for a reason, what was the original reason?
Well, this is about housing on our advice. Currently, the, uh, town of Killdo Hills allows eighteen units per acre in commercial zone multifamily. Multifamily eighteen units per acre, generally speaking. If you build a multifamily structure, it's two, uh, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. Well, usually it's half two bedrooms and half three bedrooms, that's forty-five bedrooms on an acre of land, and forty-five parking spaces. Why don't you allow forty-five one-bedroom units on an acre with forty-five parking spaces, 'cause it's forty-five bedrooms? And it won't increase density, it's just, and make them like six hundred square feet or less, they can't be over a certain size.
Tiny, right.
And they're very popular in areas where land cost is the problem. Raleigh, North Carolina, everywhere, they're building something downtown Greengland right now. And, uh, they're very popular where land cost is the problem, and land cost is the problem with housing here. Now, typically a lot on the west side's a hundred thousand dollars. Well, you can cut that number down considerably if you, uh, get a multifamily and have one-bedroom units, so let's say six hundred square feet. Um, two people can live in a one-bedroom house or one-bedroom unit if they get along, they don't, it really doesn't matter how big it is.
So are you suggesting that that kind of development could go on a fifty-five foot, a fifty-foot lot?
No, I'm talking about commercial, that's the top, I got.
He's across the street.
Across the street, right, commercial, right?
But, but you're getting back to residential.
I like that you have a solving a different problem.
I have not tried to figure out how to put a cottage court on fifty foot, it may be impossible.
It is pretty tight.
It's gonna be almost impossible, and the attorney.
Different kind of, like, right?
Width of the driveway.
But you could do it on seventy-five, couldn't you?
Yeah, seventy-five is durable.
Seventy-five will work.
All right, thank you, that is a good idea, another.
The safety issues here?
Yeah, I kinda wanna circle here.
Oh, great, and.
Yes.
Jim and I both, I think the other way you could actually do that would be go to the state and have them legislate anything over ten bedrooms requires a sprinkler system. My question is, okay, you're, you're gonna give them an incentive to put a sprinkler, uh, sprinkler system in.
The incentive is to get, get their setback back.
Okay, fine. Now, being a private home, can you make them inspect it annually like that you do on a commercial property? No. So, they're gonna put the sprinkler system in, three years from now it'll be defaulted, you've given them their incentive, and sprinklers. A dry system in this environment, which has to be a dry system, 'cause of the weather, the cold weather in winter, so the pipes will freeze, is so complex, it takes a lot of maintenance and a lot of upkeep. They're not gonna do it. They're going, they're gonna cap it, and it's gonna be done, and within three years, you don't have to inspect the system there anymore.
We can put that in the regulations that they have to submit an annual port of inspection, that's, that's, that's very doable.
Just like curbious concrete.
That's a good point.
God, I, I might be totally off base here, but an event home, my background is hospitality. And when we had weddings, we had to have a liquor license. Uh, somebody had to be in charge. So how, how did they get by with having these big events in these homes? And they're supplying alcohol, uh, how, how are they doing it?
Don't think there's a rule about it, you can have alcohol in your house, you can hire a bartender to come serve you if you want to.
But these are private.
What is permitting in this, because there, there need to be things that, to protect, not only the, the people that rent, the people that visit, but the, um, people that live in it, and other places do that.
That's a good point.
Sorry, I coughed, I wasted, missed that, I'm sorry about that. Just, we see if we have consensus to at least take away the investigation. I didn't, we already pushed back, but I think there's consensus, right?
I mean, if we go ahead and say the least, we can go ahead and go down that road to investigate and see.
Oh, oh, hold on one second, they're having a sidebar over here. Do, do you wanna share what, we missed that, I'm sorry.
Well, I just think that, uh, I was asking, um, you know, we were saying, get to give these setbacks and take them away and give them back and take away if they cap them, or if they don't, if they don't, they don't pass the inspection, they cap the. And, and, and what you're saying was that, um.
You'd be in violation of our zoning ordinance and that's fifty dollars a day for the first fifty days, a hundred dollars a day to day thirty, and five hundred dollars a day every day after, that you're not in compliance and that, and a class three misdemeanor, so that's, that's that.
Yeah, that's good.
That's forceful.
That's forceful.
All right, I'm gonna get to you, one second, this was brought up just a second by Mr. Whitley here, that what I'm hearing is we have consensus to move forward on, on that idea, at least to explore it.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're saying incentives on, on sprinklers, you're great.
Absolutely.
What have you got for us?
Good evening, I'm Jay Overton. Um, with regard to incentivization, um, seven, eight years ago, when the General Assembly passed the, uh, aesthetics bill, and we got into we couldn't regulate bedrooms, in Nag's Head, that was a big problem. Because at that point in time, they were regulating size based upon bedrooms. Uh, basically, it was a five thousand square foot house with eight bedrooms. Um, what we were able to do in that situation was, the town was looking to, uh, impose a moratorium where the maximum size house was gonna be thirty-five hundred square feet. And the whole reason for the moratorium was because they no longer could impose the architectural standards that they wanted for their town. So, first of all, as a town, we gotta make some decisions of what is that threshold. And in that particular situation, what came out of it was thirty-five hundred square feet is the maximum size of a house. However, if you voluntarily will include these aesthetic improvements to your house, then you can go up to five thousand square feet. The regulation on bedrooms is a size. But, you know, first, you gotta decide what it is that you want, and then look at where you go from there to compromise and get back to a place where we were all at. Um, with regard to the parking, uh, and, and the ordinance, I'm really not sure how, if, what Meredith or, or Cameron would think, if we had a fifty-foot lot and the new ordinance, just how many parking spaces we'd get in there, I'm assuming it would be, what, six and six?
Twenty-four total.
Six, but then the middle one's only got two parking spaces, is that what it is?
Four, you'd get four across.
If that's how you're gonna design that.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to look at it, so if you only got fifty feet, right, you only got fifty feet?
You only got four lanes.
'Cause as you're looking at it, you're talking about it, and then I know everybody's saying, well, it's the design that, that runs it, and you can be creative, but, you know, sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words, what does that actually look at doing? Yeah.
Multiple ways you can look at it. People, design, designer, designer.
Right.
There's more in there. That's one way to do parking, right?
But I mean, you're looking at stacking, if you got six stacked.
But you can say six.
Right.
But there's no, with that ordinance, to show on a design plan, you could do as many as you could fit in this way. Still do six, this would be, if you did the, if you did the access aisle, that'd be two. You, it is not limiting, it's not limiting the size of the structure, it's not limiting bedrooms. It's a design, it's a design of the parking. The staff's goal was, for safety purposes, to create less stacked parking.
Right.
Um, there's multiple ways to do it, you could do angle parking, that's not stacked, and you could get just as many parking spaces in, but it simply wouldn't be a wall of cars. Right now, we're getting three across.
Oh, I agree.
Three across, four across, you know, five, six, eighty.
So, when you've got the row of six parking spaces, and then you've got that, two parking spaces, what's the distance between those two? Is that ten feet or are they side by side?
They'd be side by side.
Okay.
There's no separation.
And then, there's, those two cars are parked behind the ones that are perpendicular.
And let's say that's your access aisle, there's nothing to say that you can't show it, put another parking space there.
Right. Giving you my opinion.
There's a thousand ways that this could be done, so please don't, this is not gospel, this is just an example.
And realizing, even when you got a four-bedroom house, you're gonna put on there, where are your four ten-by-twenty parking spaces? It's in the record, you know, but the parking police don't come out to your house and make sure you do it that way, but at least you set a standard. When you start looking at anything over about eight to ten cars in a parking lot, you don't have a drive-out, you're creating a situation that's gonna be disastrous. And if we're doing things where, whether it's residential or whether it's commercial, and we've got more than eight to ten parking spaces and we're not providing on paper, I know they're gonna park wherever, if there's twenty parking spaces there on paper, there might be forty cars there, but still going back to the planning and what we're, we're looking at on the planning part of it. Because where, where then tying the whole facility use into that? I mean, we're already, uh, common, because we're already allowing the larger lot coverage on the larger houses, which you can't do on the west side. So we're, we're providing more space to put more parking spaces in there and drive-outs for this. So that's, that's something else to consider on that.
Good point, good point. What was gonna get out of it? Uh, all right, we've covered a lot of territory here. What's that?
What do you want us to record?
So, I think we've talked about the, uh, the one thing you've got written there, right? The, um, drive-out's a little stickier, but, um, I think over the next month, we can have some conversations about, what the objections are really, um, to, or maybe there's, there's another way to frame the solution about parking. It seems like to me that we all realize that there's a problem, um, that's sometimes solved by the designer, 'cause they designed, if they've got that much space, they've got room to do angle parking and that sort of thing. Let, let me ask you guys that have seen these last few plans that came through, what did their parking designs look like? Were they generally something that gave you pause, or?
Depends on the lot width. Five-foot lot width, uh, you have a lot more creativity you can have where you have a better design. Um, they usually have a circulation circle, they have maybe a landscape island, you know, that's on seventy-five foot. As soon as you go to fifty, you're, you're gonna get four ten-by-twenty parking spaces wide, all the way to where you can get them all the way to the road, which is ten foot, if they make their, their driveway ten foot wide. Now, there's other circumstances where they'll also do it, set up four wide, they'll turn this whole row of them, and they already will have a drive-out. It won't, that's how they look, it won't be a, they're gonna call it required parking spaces, but it's similar to that design of Meredith's of the parking spaces like this, within a row of concrete or parking, as they're calling them, like that. But you can still fit twenty foot and then ten and ten, so you still, forty feet however you want. They're gonna, they're gonna fit forty-foot width of concrete in the front of the house, all the way to where that setback is. And also, nobody utilizes parking underneath of a structure because of our height requirements.
Right.
You can't fit as many stories, th- three full stories, or three and a half, as most people take advantage of putting the third and a half story in the, in the roof system. Um, so nobody's parking under a house because you start really reducing the amount of, uh, gross floor area, you're losing bedrooms, and this starts the destruction.
It just sounded to be more efficient the other way.
Sure. It's the, it's, I'm sure it's the best bang for your buck for cost per square foot in the construction industry. Um, and it fits, because our lots are so deep.
Right, if you have the room out front, you would put it out front.
Right, and if you can fit a two-hundred-and-fifty or a two-hundred-foot house, and then also another two-hundred-foot of concrete, and you still have a wonderful long dude, all cover, I mean, it fits.
Parking underneath is more expensive.
It fits, and our ordinance is very easy right now to make that idea fit. Um, so, you know, the same regulations on a five-bedroom house, you're getting for a twenty-four-bedroom house.
Can I ask a question, can, is there, can, can you have such a thing as a, a breakaway fire lane? The only way to really truly enforce a fire lane would be to, to fence it in and then have that fence be, be able to be broken away, uh, whether, you know, that's the only way to really stop people from parking on more concrete, you know what I'm saying? You're gonna have to fence it some way and then say, okay, fire can quickly lock it down and get their truck in there, or whatever, whatever purpose it may be, but that's really the only way you're gonna add concrete and not get more cars on it. And it's, I find all of them interesting that stacking, you know, by just enforceability being the big thing we were talking about. You know, whether you design it this way or put lines in there.
But like I said, all it is is more coverage.
It's just more, and it's more line, and, and I thought that's what people were against, but maybe that's what they're for, I don't know, I don't know. More concrete is more concrete, so, but they're gonna utilize all the concrete that's there, and they're not necessarily gonna park them on lines that are.
So it really comes down, it's five votes, we're trying to figure out, there's something that a, a group of three people here will say has benefit, we can, we can make that sort of thing happen.
Could there be such a thing as a breakaway fire lane? Attorney shouldn't even have that.
Single, single-family development is exempt from the fire code.
Yeah.
Now, it, could we explore that being part of, you know, incentivize a marked fire lane? People are still gonna park in a marked fire lane.
No, it would have to be fenced or something.
A, a fence.
Can't do it.
I, you can't fence a fire lane to begin with, in a commercial site.
It would have to be something that could be taken down or something like that.
It wouldn't meet the requirements of the fire code, so I don't know how we would, you know, set that up.
A novel idea though.
Fire lane, don't the fire truck just move your car? They'll just move your car.
No, I asked that question, they said no.
They, they don't do that.
I also think about, I mean, a lot of codes and rules and laws that are not necessarily enforceable, but we still have them.
Yeah, but, that just makes them good, that's, that's a, that's a point of view.
But it's also, yeah, true, but it's also that, we also just, it doesn't mean that you just let go of safety or you let go of whatever, because someone might not follow it.
Yeah, we just learn to follow the rules.
Legislature will put a lot of laws on the books that are unenforceable, and it's quite frustrating, and it also doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
And, yeah.
Question, yeah. As we move forward with all this stuff, like the, the vegetation aspect of this.
Yes.
I think there's a pretty good acceptance of that particular one. That one, we won't have to change a thing, we all could vote on that tonight.
Yes.
Or bring, or bring that back up, and the way it is. And vote on, not bring it up, but vote on it, just, just the way it is. It wouldn't have to come back to the planning board, it's good to go the way it is right now, I'm assuming.
Yes.
If I'm wrong.
Oh, you're right, I agree.
Yeah.
The second one, because this process seems to, to take some time, you know, and, you know, things move pretty fast in this town sometimes, as far as new houses and permits and, the, the second one, as far as the stack parking, and the, the additional fire lane, or whatever we're calling that area, you know, that would have to come back to the planning board.
Yeah.
So, you know, my thoughts are, the one, let's just move forward with it. You know, I mean, everybody seems to agree with, about that one. The second one, get staff to rewrite that, because we've taken some things out of it, or at least one aspect of that out of it, is the setbacks. Again, that's gonna have to, once that's rewritten, it's gonna have to come back to the planning board, get voted on again, which gives you all plenty of time to talk and think and do whatever. And then, you know, that we can be ready, as opposed to kinda delaying everything that happens. You know what I mean? We're in a spot where it's basically written, we're taking one aspect out of it, and then, you know, we could be moving forward with this, you know, as time goes along, I'm, they're shaking their head no.
No, just, I agree.
They denied it.
Because of the way it was in the last time.
It's been denied, and this is a completely different.
Oh, is that right, okay.
Yeah.
My bad chip. We talked about it yesterday.
I know.
But that'll, it'll be a short word reading.
Yeah, but I, you know, I'm just saying that, you know.
That doesn't mean it can't keep going.
No, we can, we can, we can get it done quickly.
Exactly.
We're just, we seem to be spinning wheels a lot of times, and, you know, we've got some things that people agree on, that we can't just kinda move forward with.
Whatever we're going through here.
So that's, yeah.
Go ahead.
So, if you wanna send the landscape buffer back to the planning board, we can do that. And if you want us to work on fire suppression, we'll get that to the planning board as soon as we can. If you want us to look at some alternatives for parking, whether it be incentivizing an actual marked fire lane, saying your parking setbacks are seven feet, unless you put in a properly marked fire lane, and of course with the fire code, then your parking setbacks are five feet.
Uh, the trade off of that, very good, incentivization back to the.
So there's some things that we might be able to work on, if that is something that you guys would be interested in, those that work strongly, and those to it, that it would be a marked fire lane that says fire lane, we'll run it through the school of government, see if we can do it.
That's a yes.
And with.
How about the existing properties?
Hold on.
Let, let's let her get through this.
Do you want to continue to include stacking, or do you wanna put that to the side and only go for fire lane at the moment, and then come back to stack parking? I think that they're hand in hand, I think that they could go together quite well.
Maybe we could get a couple options.
To speak to Ivy's point regarding like enforcement. In the, in commercial development today, we have required drive outs, and we do not allow stack parking. Do we have any control of that from an enforcement standpoint, if it's not a fire lane? No, but it's promoting the use of that space. So you have to remember, there's a lot of things in our zoning ordinance that is not something that our code enforcement officer or our planner can go out and do all day, but when it comes through our hands, we're gonna make sure that it meets the rules and regulations at the time, and we're promoting that.
Yeah, that's a theory thing, I, that I personally don't like, but, you know, and some people will agree with me that law that's not enforceable is not necessarily a good law.
But it is, but, but BJ, um, it is enforced, because we're making sure that it meets the regulations when it comes through the approval process, it gets permitted, that is our job.
Right, right, right.
So they're not, it's not unenforceable, we are enforcing it, and we're, we're doing it daily.
First thing, that the concrete is poured.
And, oh, I understand, I understand. A lot of required parking spaces are boats in Kettlebells, and we're not gonna tell them to move their boat out of a required parking space, you know? Those people park in their item.
Right, it's the unwritten rule of four tires on the grass, maybe. It's not a rule either, but that's what everybody says.
Are you gonna do this one, or are you gonna do that one, and then we're gonna do some alternatives for parking?
And some of these are gonna move faster than others, obviously.
This one's gonna move real fast. And that one should back up in a second.
The, that one, the landscaping is gonna.
Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, that goes here. The cottage court concessions, if you wanna just change it from a hundred to seventy-five feet, we can do that extremely quickly, like it can be at the next planning board meeting.
But just to, just to emphasize, even the landscaping buffer has to go back to public hearing.
Yes.
It's gonna move quicker, but it's as if it hasn't been discussed before.
Has to go through the public process.
Right, properly.
See, can I also ask, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, ask.
You know, we talked about all the safety stuff that, that goes on with these houses, because it is a very unique thing. You know, we have families that come into town, and, you know, when some tragic thing happens in the middle of the night, and, you know, forty people have to get out of this house, and they're all asleep, you know, it's a big giant problem. And I think, you know, the planning board, the department told me that, at some point in time over the years, they've taken away a, a one egress that you needed in a home, and that seems ludicrous to me, especially when you have a situation like that, and you have that many people. It's not like people could jump out of a four, a four story window, you know, and survive. Hopefully they, you know, that never happens. But, you know, it just seems silly. And, you know, I would like to see, you know, Terry brought up the illuminated signs or some type of, you know, the, the, at least points them in the right direction about how to get out. In the middle of the night, I don't know if you ever had bad things happen to you in the middle of the night, but it's, you know, that's in your own home. Imagine being in a house that's fifteen thousand.
Doing the same sort of thing like an incentivization where.
Exactly, but along with that, you know, at least, at the very least, uh, instead of to create stairways from deck to deck on the back of these houses, to at least give them another way to get out, other than that front door, that, you know, is impossible for everyone to get out at that point.
Good idea.
You know, it just seems, there has to be some things here, you know, and we hope that builders and developers and, and investors, you know, I, I know it's all, you know, it's a big deal about the money, but, you know, there's an aspect of this that we have to be a little concerned about people and decked upstairs in us.
And this is the one lever that we can pull, that's safety, that you can do a trade off for.
Right. You know, when they, when we have, in October, when all our, all of our.
Okay, so let me just recap. These are the things that we're gonna look into, one is a trade off for fire signage.
I'm pretty sure about this one.
Right, suppression is number one. Number two, no, hold on, back to fire suppression. Other things on the fire suppression trade, we've got fire suppression and trade for setbacks. We've got egress lighting, or directional signs, and trade for something. And then the other one was, uh, a second, a second stairwell, and what do we incentivize for that?
And that's just a matter of, if you could group them together.
Another stairway, you want a deck.
Yeah, it will research.
That can be done cosmetically, seriously.
You gotta show, so when you incentivize something, Casey?
Yeah.
When you incentivize something, you have to show a community good. You have to put some wheresses and some there for us. So, in, in grouping them together, it may or may not be beneficial to group them together, and that would be something that we really need to look at, and let Casey really weigh in, weigh in on.
That's way to do it, yeah.
Um, I got what you're talking about with the egress, and whether it be lighting or a, a second egress. A second egress probably shows more community good than interior lights.
And even it's just the fire department, I mean, that's a, you know, certainly that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can, that, that, this particular one, the, the egress one will probably be considerably slower, because we've not looked at it at all. We've looked at fire suppression so far, and, and tried to run it up the flagpole, and, and gotten some, some positive feedback that this is a possibility. So we have to, this will take, this will not be the next meeting, or, or the, or maybe even the next one, it might take a little bit of additional time, but it is on the, the list to, to start researching. Um, one question I have for the board members is particularly with the parking alternatives and the fire suppression incentives, do you guys want to see a draft of this to send to the planning board for a recommendation prior to it going to the planning board? Or do you want the planning board to take it, and then y'all get it and not?
Not like it? Yeah, I think that'd be good. Yeah, running a bias would be good.
And, and then you can forward it to the planning board for a formal recommendation? So, so the parking.
Put together, yeah.
So the parking and fire are actually gonna move slower, because they're gonna have to come to a board meeting before they come back to the planning board. The only one that's going directly to the planning board right now is the landscape buffer.
Yeah.
Do you want to change the width of a cottage court? That is, that is a cross through one hundred, right down seventy-five. I don't think that that needs to be reviewed prior to the planning board, but it can be done very quickly if this is the desire of.
I think everybody's on board for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, to seventy-five.
Can I ask one quick question about that? Has, has anyone even come up and asked that question, or?
No, wait, Eddie, Eddie asked one time, can we do it on seventy-five, but he never held it through. He's not here, so I can talk about it.
But the biggest.
Well, it's because it didn't work with what he was trying to.
But just know, the largest homes we have in town are on seventy-five foot lots, at least possibly it's given another alternative.
Cause those, those are the really big ones that everybody, yeah.
They're hands down the largest ones we have in town.
And also for, long term for redevelopment, that's.
And, and, and then, if we, if we do have someone ask about doing a cottage court on fifty foot wide lots, we would have surely come back to the board and say, hey, we, y'all talked about this before, and someone's interested, do you, yeah, do you wanna try to, you know, so that, that's a possibility, instead of trying to throw it all out there with incentives for fifty feet, because you would have to incentivize it. There, there's no way it wouldn't, I mean, you could put it on the books, but it wouldn't ever be built.
Yeah, no.
Seventy-five's got potential.
Financial potential, yeah, cause.
So those two can go directly to the planning board. These two will come back to you guys in some sort of draft with some alternatives. This, we gotta do a little more research on, and we'll get back to you. There you go. We'll say April and shoot for March.
There you go.
What's that?
And another alternative to, to more stairs is ladders and rooms, you know, there are other alternatives. The fire folks would be able to do much.
Something more encompassing, which exactly, exactly.
See, she's got ladders in every room in her house, it's only two stories. I put all my kids' bedrooms on the ground floor.
My kids even.
Taking vacation with you?
No, but I take a smoke to take a vacation with me.
Now she takes the kids.
Do the planning board choose the planning board draft, the VOC, draft the VOC, and VOC by April?
We have a good old plan going on there.
Oh yeah?
Pretty work.
I'm excited that you found an incentive, because we've been talking about incentives for a long time, what's a legal incentive, I'm excited you have some ideas on the legal incentive. Good job. Good job, Casey.
Good job, Casey.
See, there we have it.
Alright, well, I think we've covered most of the ideas that, and a whole bunch of new ones that we didn't have before this meeting. Is there anything, I don't wanna leave any stone unturned, is there anything in the, in the planning realm, not permitting, party realm, that hasn't been talked about, that anybody can think of? Cause I'm running out of them for sure, I have a bunch, and they're all up there. Good work, everybody.
I did, I just wanted to ask the one question that I was trying to ask earlier, and I'm sorry if I interrupted. The, you're talking about the parking, I think the extra parking. Is, is that gonna be something that will be implemented into the homes that are already?
No, this is only, we're, we're only working forward, unfortunately.
So, so there's no way to do anything with the twenty-eight minute.
Retroactively, no, no. They become non-conformities, but that doesn't really mean anything.
Yeah, because these are the ones that are gonna be the problems, we got three side by side.
Well, we are learning as we grow, and, and we have a.
I think that's gotta be addressed at some point, you know, we're trying to look forward, but we're also needing to look at how to live with what we've gotten stuck with.
Yeah. It's gonna be an interesting summer, twenty twenty, let's see how it goes. Given that nobody's typing in with a new idea here, I guess we will move on to the next part of the agenda, and I guess we'll move back to that. Thank you guys for doing this.
Actually, if, if you're playing, um.
Oops.
Let's just stay put for a second, please, and let Meredith do the introduction.
Okay, we can do that here, yeah.
And then, and then we can move back.
Sure.
We'd really like for as many people as can to stay, and, and here it is.
So, the next item is the introduction to the twenty twenty flood maps, getting passed around. A proposed flood damage prevention ordinance.
I can't explain to you how fast this is gonna happen.
She told me she was gonna make it nice and quick.
The PowerPoint, Cameron?
Yeah, it's, the computer's acting like it doesn't have dinner.
It's mine.
It was a.
Alright, well, I can do some stuff without that. So, um, we've been working on the flood maps were released in June of twenty sixteen. Um, we finally got our letter of determination on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. That starts the six month clock for adoption for the new flood maps and the revised flood damage prevention ordinance. Deadline for adoption is June nineteenth, twenty twenty. And the town is required to have a public hearing on the maps and the ordinance prior to adoption. Um, quick timeline for you guys, January twenty-second, obviously, today, we're distributing the proposed flood damage prevention ordinance to the board of commissioners and the planning board. February eleventh, the planning board will, will start review and establish special meetings as necessary. March ninth, the board of commissioners will re, review and set a public hearing for April sixth, twenty twenty. This is all very hopeful, just so you know, this is, this is my plan.
Optimistic.
April sixth, twenty twenty, you'll hold the public hearing and possibly the flood maps and the flood damage prevention ordinance with an effective date of June nineteenth, twenty twenty. However, the last meeting that we will have available for adoption will be June eighth, which gives us a little bit of cushion. Um, staff has been working with the new board members, we've been working with, as a group, with county and all neighboring municipality planners for the past three years to develop a user group and coordinate public meetings to educate the public in special interest about the proposed ordinance and the importance of maintaining your flood insurance. I'll give you a quick basics of the map, some of you heard this at nauseam, I'm gonna give it to you anyway, really quick. Preliminary National Flood Insurance Program, maps were released June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. The maps were developed by North Carolina Flood Mapping Program in conjunction with the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. The maps were released in digital format and can be viewed at the Flood Risk Information System, PRIS. If you just type in NC PRIS, it comes up. The website is NC Flooding. I'm not gonna go through the definitions, essentially VE is velocity, AE is rising, um, moving, rising water, AO is rising water from the ground, X and shaded X are considered not special flood hazard districts. Uh, the preliminary flood maps are significantly different than our current flood maps. Um, our last flood maps were in two thousand and six. Current flood maps, I will show you that right now we have five hundred forty-six properties in the V zone, which is a velocity zone, waves of two feet or higher with velocity. New maps only have us with two hundred and twenty-six. Most of our oceanfront south of First Street is now in a undesignated X flood zone, and is not at risk of flooding. Our, our A, A zones, we have four thousand three hundred forty-four, three hundred thirty-four, are dropping to two hundred and seventy-two, cause no one floods in Kettlebells. So, just, just another page that summarizes this, this is dramatically fewer houses that are going to be in a flood zone, which historically flood. So, show you a map, this is our current flood zone, the yellow is our current undesignated, or unshaded X. Blue is AE, the green is VE. Next. This is our current map, white is X, yellow is AE, and the green there is VE. Notice on the second map, the south end, all the houses are outside of the V zone. That V zone runs along the top of the primary due. Next map, next slide, please. So the net change.
You're just killing me.
You alert. You alert.
I'm telling you, it's hungry. There you go.
So you can't see it, never mind.
It's coming back, I guess.
It was really cool. I'll just sell it.
I'll get it.
So the concerns about the new maps, the new maps do not reflect the flood risk and historic flooding in the town of Kettlebells. Many of the properties that are coming out of the special flood hazard area have histori, historically experienced flooding. Properties remaining in the special flood hazard area have a reduced base flood elevation, which is also below our historic flood levels. And much of the oceanfront's been moved from the special flood hazard area, which is our most vulnerable properties. I wanna show you a cool map, if it'll come up. So pink. So pink shows our properties that have been removed from the special flood hazard area.
The light pink.
The light pink, yes. So, um, when the state releases the, the maps, it certainly does release a state model or, ordinance. It comes from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Risk Management Section. There are several state revisions to the ordinance for the two thousand and six version, which we're currently under. Many of the changes are clarifications to the two thousand and six ordinance, some are additional regulatory standards. There are some optional regulations the state offers for localities to determine, most of which are higher regulatory standards than the NFIP. The towns are required to adopt the state model ordinance with local modifications approved by the state to remain in good standing with the NFIP program, which provides flood insurance policies and emergency response. Our, our recommendation based on our, our flood maps was to propose a higher regulatory standard in the town of Kettlebells Hills and continue an aggressive, uh, public information campaign to ed, educate the public on the proposed ordinance. The risk of flooding and the importance of property owners to maintain their flood insurance par, policies regardless of the flood designation. Staff is proposing in the ordinance that's in front of you, a local elevation standard that supplements the proposed maps in the special flood hazard areas and requires flood elevation standards in the X and shaded X zones. One, the, the big part of this is in the definition section, I will, I will not, um, read this out loud to you. But essentially, the next slide, please, what we do, what we're trying to do or what we're choosing to do is say in the VE, VE zone, that your base flood elevation plus one foot free obstruction, that is what it is today. So that's not changing, but we don't have much VE. The AE zone, the base flood elevation, we are putting in a three foot free board or an elevation of eight feet, whichever is greater. Um, most of our AE zones and AO zones have decreased to four feet. Right now, they're an average of eight or nine, mostly eight, average eight, but we have nines and tens. So what this will do is you'll either be eight feet, or if you happen to fall into an AE, five, you'll be, well, six, you'll be nine feet. But essentially throughout town, that will require an eight foot elevation, which is our average flood zone elevation now, which is also just above our historic flood levels that we have in town. Um, in the shaded X and X zones, we will also require a regulatory flood protection elevation of eight feet. Or if the natural grade is above eight feet, so they will be able to build slab on grade if you are at eight in your natural grade. This addresses a lot of our properties that are currently in an X zone that have not had any elevation standards. Ocean Acres, almost the entire subdivision is above eight feet, so they wouldn't have to build differently than they are today. But those that are put in an X zone that flood, that the ground elevation is below an eight, they would have to lift their houses to a minimum of eight feet for flood protection. And finally, in the X and shaded X use, um, we will do eight foot, I did that already. We will limit the use below the regulatory flood elevation to the parking, storage and dry entry. Properties east of NC twelve, we will require free of obstruction requirements. Currently, um, that, that means you have to be one foot free of obstruction, means you can't build slab on grade on the oceanfront. A lot of our oceanfront has been converted to an X zone and we feel like it's very important to maintain that one foot free of obstruction to allow flow of water on our oceanfront at our most vulnerable properties and that's what we're recommending on a east of NC twelve. We will, those of you who are real familiar with flood ordinances, we will not enforce or not implement substantial damage or substantial improvement in the X zone. It's not reasonable. We will limit the uses, uh, conversion below the required flood elevation, I know that you've probably seen a lot of real estate advertisements says garage, soon to be rec room. No, not unless it's above an eight. That's what we're gonna try to limit that conversion of, of that property because it is in an area that historically floods. So there's a lot of other changes in the ordinance, they were just a few of the highlights. Um, they're outlined in the ordinance, the town's modifications are purple, the state's modifications are green. Uh, just to give you a hint, that's at the top of the page, it gives you all that, um, wonderful. Staff has worked diligently with the county and the neighboring municipalities and planners over the past three years to develop the proposed flood damage prevention ordinance to create as much continuity between towns and the county as possible. I can safely say that the town of Duck, the town of Southern Shore, and the town of Kitty Hawk in Deere County are all proposing the local elevation standard. And we've worked to standardize our ordinances and interpretations throughout the county. This was a big part of meeting with the home builders, Jay was integral in that, is, is everybody coming together and be, playing off the same, same page. Cause there's been a lot of, um, Naxa does it like this, Kettlebells does it like this, Kitty Hawk does it like this, and we tried to come together as a group so that we were doing it the same as much as possible. We've had several public meetings with the home builders, the insurance companies, local engineers, survey, surveyors, board of realtors to explain the proposed higher regulatory standards. Additionally, the group has started a campaign to inform the public of the risk of flooding and encouraging homeowners to maintain their flood insurance policy. The theme of the campaign is low risk is not no risk and y'all all have a brochure that, um, gets, gets you that information. Deere County is also a multi-jurisdictional website, which provides additional flood information and timelines and important links, it's OVXfloodmaps.com. In conclusion. All of that. The timeline for adoption with our meeting schedule is tight and special meetings may be required, particularly at the planning board level. Adoption of the flood maps and the flood damage prevention ordinance is required by June nineteenth, twenty twenty to remain in the NFIP, which provides our flood insurance to our citizens and damage assistance after a disaster. Staff will be available to meet with any members of the planning board or board of commissioners to discuss the ordinance and to make the process move more smoothly. We're available eight hours a day, five days a week, and we would love to have you come in and talk to us about this ordinance. We invite the board of commissioner members to come to the planning board meetings to further discuss the details of the ordinance and to provide input at that level. And we would like everyone to please encourage our citizens to maintain their flood insurance policies. I doubt you have any questions that y'all just out handed them, so, um, but when you do, y'all have my number, please, please come in and talk to me about it. Cameron also, Brian's worked on it too, so we're all available to help you out, because it's very complicated, not gonna lie.
Yeah. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Meredith.
Alright, I guess we're gonna relocate. Alright, we're back, you can hear me, there we go. Um, thank you for that, um, thank you for the public and thanks for the folks that decided to stay for the rest of this exciting meeting. Our next item is committee reports, I know some folks have made it to some meetings, but you said you're gonna bring something next up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna prepare something, mayor, uh, for our next meeting, I did go to the, uh, government education, uh, meeting today, uh, very interesting, some, some informative stuff and, uh, I'll prepare a report.
Looking forward to that. Now, you've got one coming up, right, the next, next month?
February twentieth.
February twentieth, alright. Um, community parents is meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Thirty, anything else in the meantime, no?
No, thank you.
Alright, that puts us on to, uh, commissioners' agendas. Start that up.
One quick thing, yesterday I had the pleasure of attending the saving lives task force meeting. And, uh, Artie Tillitt from the Deere County Schools, uh, made a really good presentation on, uh, the drug testing program and all, Deere County junior highs and middle schools. I found it extremely informative and valuable and, well, you all felt about potentially inviting Artie to come give that presentation for us. I think it was really good and very good for the town to share that information. So what do y'all think?
So we have, I've seen the presentation eleven years in a row and it's always great.
That sounds good.
If, if you don't have kids in school and don't make it to a school board meeting, it's, it's really interesting to, to see the, uh, benefits of that program. Sure, if he has the availability, yeah.
I guess we'll just ask staff to, when you reach out.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else? Uh, mayor's agenda is to get well. That's all I have. The town manager's agenda is next. I think the town attorney has had to step out, he did not have anything as well. We do have consent agenda.
I do, yes, sir, um, just a couple of items, the first is a minutes from the January thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting. And the second is a budget transfer, uh, this is one of those, it's between departments that I think I alluded to last, uh, one of the other previous meetings where, um, we simply report that this was done, um, to you. And in this particular one, it's transferred funds from the utility system division capital outlay to the plant, does it, um, division for annual tank man, management and cleaning. And staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll make a second.
And a second for Ms. Woodley, is there any further discussion? Thanks for making us sound smarter than we are in the minutes and, uh, all in favor of approving them, please, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? I carry unanimously, so we have approved the consent agenda. That was the time, you bet, that was the time when we have a second opportunity for public comment. Um, I guess we tired them out and they left. I guess that was, that was a good thing. Can't take any more of us right now. Um, last chance for public comment, anybody? Alright, hearing that, we'll close public comment. Uh, I guess we are looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.